Welcome everybody to the regular scheduled city council meeting of Wednesday, March 20th, 2024. Let the record show all councilors are present except for councillor Justin Fasso. No adds and deletes. Could I have approval of the minutes, the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by councillor Whitney.
Support.
Support by councillor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. We'll go to approval of minutes. Approve the minutes of the regular Hibbing City Council meeting of March 6, 2024. Wishes of the council?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by councillor Swiber.
Support.
Support by councillor Hoffman-Sockman. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Approve the minutes of the Hibbing City Council Workshop Meeting of March 6, 2024. Wishes of the council?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by councillor Bayless.
Support.
Support by councillor Whitney. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. I'll move on to the consent agenda. Number one, accounts payable dated 3/15/2024 checks number 176848 through 176954 in the amount of $958,776.45. Number two, approve city payroll for pay period ending 3/8/2024 checks number 168923 through 168989 in the amount of $586,460.59. Three, approve the update sergeant description for the Hibbing Police Department. Four, acknowledge the resignation of Skylen R. from the temporary library aide position effective March 8, 2024. Five, acknowledge the resignation of Brittany Paige Koushak from the temporary library aide position effective March 20th, 2024. Approve the advancement of Cory Bloom to patrol Officer Two with the Hibbing Police Department effective March 21st, 2024. Seven, authorize the Hibbing City Council to attend the Sammy's Pizza soft opening on Tuesday, March 26, 2024 from noon to 8:00 p.m. Eight, approve exercising option year, approve exercising the option year 7/1, 24 through 6/30/25 of the contract for operation of Hibbing Area Transit with TacTran. Nine, set the next regular meeting for Wednesday, April 3, 2024 at 5:00 p.m. in the Hibbing City Council Chamber. Ten, set the next city council workshop for Wednesday, April 3, 2024, following the regular meeting in the Hibbing City Hall Council Chamber. Wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written and published.
We have a motion by councillor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by councillor Hildebrandt? Okay, councillor Hildebrandt. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. We'll move on right now to the public forum and we do that one person in attendance tonight. Mr. Bender? Please state your name and your address for the record and you do have five minutes. Thank you.
Yep, I understand. Kyle Bender, 1507 14th Avenue East. Just like to start off by thanking Sean Nicola for forwarding my email to Pat Green and helping expedite this process. I got the chance to speak with Pat last week. I feel it was a positive conversation. I feel we came to an understanding. It sounds like an exception, maybe a special circumstance is being considered at this moment. So I'd just like to thank you, Pat, for the efforts that you've put into helping me overcome this hurdle. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bender. I appreciate your time and your comments. At this time, we'll move on to department and committee reports, starting with Mr. Green.
Mayor and council, this grant application, it would be to accept funds from the ITRV for residential development, demolition of three buildings, or three houses, and one is the house that had a fire in Brooklyn. Would like approval for us to send that in.
Very good. Hearing what Mr. Green said about an application for demolition funds, wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by councillor Bayless.
Support.
Support by councillor Swiber. Any discussion? So you said three units, Pat, at this time?
Correct.
Okay. No other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Next up, community economic developer, Mr. Miss Olivanti.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. Tonight, the first request I have is to approve the purchase agreement with NorTech Properties to purchase parcel 140-0106-00110 for $864,000 per the commercial purchase agreement that is in your packet. This is a parcel of land owned by NorTech Properties, which is located as follows: Hibbing Industrial Park, lots three and four, block two. In order to secure the necessary land for economic and community development within the city limits for upcoming projects, the staff recommendation is to purchase this land for the negotiated prices outlined in the purchase agreement. One item that I will offer as an amendment to what's in your packet is that on page two of two in the representations and warranties, item J has been added, which says buyer has been made aware that the city of Hibbing, prior to seller's original purchase of the property, operated a city waste site within this area. Buyer will not hold seller responsible for any remediation responsibility or expenses. We do have in this purchase agreement that we are conducting a phase one and phase two, so we have taken that on as the city at this time. So staff recommendation is to approve the commercial purchase agreement as written.
Very good. Hearing what Ms. Olivanti had to say. Wishes of the council? Questions? Wishes of the council first?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Motion by councillor Bayless.
Support.
Support by councillor Whitney. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. That's it.
All right, mayor, members of the council, item B is now in negotiation, so I need to pull that from the agenda because we have entered into a negotiation through the Hibbing Economic Development Authority, but I will request item C, which is to authorize the mayor to sign a letter of commitment for the Great Plains Institute project on equitable hydrogen and green iron/steel community engagement on Minnesota's Iron Range. This is in our city's strategic plan, core strategy number three, engaged and forward-thinking leadership, future focused on all levels of the organization and community-oriented problem solving. The city of Hibbing's role would be to help convene community residents, businesses, and decision-makers on local priorities for hydrogen and green energy, potentially including community workshops, focus groups, interviews, or surveys. Great Plains Institute would facilitate discussion and provide content along with other team members such as the CERTS team and our research partners, NRI and National Research Environmental Laboratories. Great Plains Institute wants to ensure that participating entities and communities on this concept represented a diversity of opinion about hydrogen and the green economy. Department of Energy specifically asked that team members from the GPI request represent communities or community-based stakeholders and emphasized including disadvantaged and underrepresented communities and perspectives. Hibbing is designated as a disadvantaged community. GPI's team includes supporting research institutions such as NRI and NREL, community-focused organizations such as St. Louis County, Etasca Economic Development Corporation, and tribal nations such as Leech Lake and Fond du Lac, Minnesota Power and the Blue-Green Alliance, and regional non-governmental organizations such as the Iron Range Partnership on Sustainability, Northeast Clean Energy Resource Team, which is CERTS, Northern Chapter of Citizens Climate Lobby. They have also reached out to industry representatives, although they cannot be funded, a funded party under the terms of the DOE grant, and they are reaching out to Rams and some other regional organizations as well. So we can participate in several different ways. A sub-recipient role is a formal subcontractor that is getting a funding allocation under the grant and would require some additional forms to fill out. At this time, the letter is in your packet. I will say that I have connected with our Hibbing Public Utility, and they requested one insertion into this letter, which reads as follows as paragraph two, that Hibbing has its own independent municipal utility that provides biomass combined heat and power to our city's residents and businesses. Hibbing is the first utility in the nation to adopt a restorative utility plan based on circular economy principles, and hydrogen is the missing link between current and the future, and the economy of the future. So we would be working, as you can see, with our Hibbing Public Utilities and collaborating as the Hibbing voice on this particular project. So the request then is for the mayor to sign a letter of commitment for this project.
That was a mouthful.
Yes, it was.
I appreciate all the information. Hearing what Ms. Olivanti had to say, wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve with the revision as Ms. Olivanti had read.
We have a motion by councillor Hoffman-Sockman.
I'll support.
Support by councillor Bayless. Any discussions? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
At this time, we move on to city service director, Mr. Rowley.
Thank you, mayor, council. We're at another milestone here in our project with City Hall, and I have our constructor managers from ICS here, and DSGW will be on Zoom to go over design development documents with us here quickly.
Very good.
Good evening. I'm Damian Williams. I'm with ICS, project director. I have Brandon Miller here, also from ICS. He's our project engineer. He's been a lot of the work on the project with me, and he is our IT specialist when it comes to his generation, I'll say. All right. All right, so first off, we have our agenda tonight. We're going to review the design development documents. We're going to review the design development estimates, the overall budget summary, our schedule, and then we'll give you our recommendation moving forward. So first off, we're going to talk about our architectural documents that are included in your packet, and we have Eric Wedge from DSGW online on Zoom here, so he's going to walk us through the documents. Eric?
Thank you, council. Thank you, Damian. We can go to the next sheet. This is just our prototypical cover sheet. We have some fuller plans with some notes of interior renovations that are happening on the roof. We can go to the next sheet. We will be doing a complete roof replacement. This is our roof replacement plan. We will be infilling the existing skylight that is on the eastern portion of the roof. We have done core samples of the roof. We have found that there is adequate insulation on the existing roof, ranging from four and a half to six and three quarters of an inch. All of that insulation where we did test samples appears to be dry, so you will see later on in the presentation. When we talk about budgets, we believe we've found a solution for saving the city some money, and we will be completely replacing all the membranes on the roof. Next slide, please. This is where the plans get challenging in the terracotta replacement and the tuck pointing of the failing areas of brick. These are all our construction document notes showing the replacement that's going to happen. We are looking at the clock tower, restoring all four faces of the glass face of the clock tower. The glass faces on the clock are cracked, broke, and you have water infiltration coming in through the glass faces. We will be replacing all of the windows on the clock tower. We will be replacing the rotted wood on the clock tower and repainting the clock tower to give it a fresh look. Moving down, again, we'll be doing all the roof replacement on the notes, and we will be from the terracotta band up, we will be tuck pointing and replacing damaged pieces of terracotta. That's basically the elevation and the construction, design development notes that have been put into place. Next sheet. This just gets into a little more detail of the specifics of the pieces of terracotta and brick in the locations of where the replacement and the corrections need to happen. Basically, on the east and west elevations, you have the large, the large facade pieces that are going to have to, we're going to bid it out in three alternative options. Number option number one will be to just give it a facelift, remove the damaged brick, replace the damaged brick with new brick. The next option will be to completely tear them down and rebuild them. It's like peeling an onion. We're not 100% sure how far the rot goes into where we have the damaged and falling brick. In our construction document phase or our next phase, we are looking to hire a mason to dig deeper into those to find out where we can find solid brick, so we can have more accurate information for the final bidding documents. And go to the next sheet. This becomes our electrical sheet. Go on to the next one, cover sheet. Electrically, we are just tying into the new air handling units, and this is just showing the connections of the new electrical panels for the new electrical units, for the new HBAC units. Next sheet. More of the same, where we're tying into units on the separate floors with the electrical. Next sheet. Again, these are the two condensing units, are the unit that sits on top of the police garage roof that we'll be rewiring. Next sheet. This is where we get up onto the roof elevation. We will be replacing all five air handlers on the roof. We'll be replacing them with the same size units that are there with some more economizing capabilities to make them more energy efficient for the city. In the process of that, we will be doing all-new electrical and all-new gas piping. Next sheet. This is just a detail sheet showing how the different pieces of a mechanical equipment sit on curbs on top of the roof, and it's a schedule sheet of electrical requirements, mechanical requirements. More scheduled information. Next sheet. More electrical information. More electrical information, just the connection of the units. Again, more electrical information of the connection of the units, and the locations on the various floors that we have to do the connections to. This is all the electrical requirements that will be happening on the roof to connect all of the units. Next sheet. I guess Brandon and Damian, it'll get into your estimate, but if there are any questions on the architectural, mechanical, or electrical side of the documents, we are in the design development stage. Our documents from a mechanical, electrical, and architectural side are, we've moved into, after today's meeting, we'll move into the construction document phase in getting the project manual and bidding specifications together, also adding a few more clarifying details to the documents that are shown here today.
Anybody have any questions? Are all air handling units being replaced?
Yes.
Okay, all?
Yes.
Very good.
All right, perfect. Thank you, Eric. All right, next we have our design development estimate. We, you can compare, we include the SDS estimate, when it comes to the construction document estimate, we'll have that on this slide as well, so you can see how the project progresses. Right now, the project is on budget. We are holding the same budget. We did have the opportunity to save money on the roof insulation, and by doing that, we created some more budget for restoration work, because again, we do not know how much restoration we're going to have. So we met with the leaders of the city, felt best interest, let's hang on to those dollars right now and make sure we address all the needs we possibly can on the exterior of this building. Another great thing is we also were able to include two more fan coil units and the condensing units on that lower level roof. We were going to create an alternate for that. We had an opportunity where we had some savings, so we received pricing from two different suppliers on equipment, and some of the mechanical equipment's actually becoming less expensive, so we were able to do a little bit more scope there, so we got that included as well. So the dollars are the same, but we're attempting to do more work. That makes sense. Any questions? You want me to walk through the line on by line item, or?
I think you could do a quick summary.
Okay. All right, so you can see the building demolition has been reduced. Building structure, that number has increased, and what we're doing is we remove some windows on the very roof level, on the, not on the clock tower, but on that level where it's where the access door is for reaching that roof, so we infill that with CMU and in brick, so we got that included. Also, when that number is, again, we got those structural tie-offs for people who do maintenance on the units. They can, we're safety equipment. The exterior closure and shell, that's where our restoration work is for the main roof. It also includes window work and then the roofing. Interior construction, the $3,000, we added a door that's accessing the west side of the building. We have a door on the east side of the building. You have to crawl over that pitched roof to get to the west side, so now we're going to have access on both sides. Special construction, $91,000, that's addressing the clock tower itself. The clock, the glass that we talked about, that Eric had mentioned that needed to be replaced, that's cracked, and then also some of that restoration work they talked about as well. Mechanical, $320,000, that number is carrying over from the original engineer's estimate. Again, we had that savings for the equipment itself. We were able to add those condenser units and two fan coil units that weren't originally part of the project. And then the electrical number, that actually went up a bit, more just based on, again, the engineer's estimate, adding a little bit more scope with those units and those two fan coil units. And then there's that skylight that we're going to be removing, but we're going to be adding LED lighting below it. We're going to cap the roof, or we're going to still add lighting in there, so it feels like it's still a skyline. So that was part of the scope that we added there. So grand total, $1,391,067. Same as last time that we met. Next slide is just our overall budget summary. Again, this is a slide that we're going to see every time we meet on the project. The only change on this slide is the actual cost of design to date of the $66,476, so that's just what we've invoiced to date. So as we move forward in the project, you'll see this living, breathing document keeps us on track, lets everybody know exactly where we are on the project. Any questions about that? Next, we have our schedule, so we're at the milestone of March 20th, design development approval, moving into construction documents. We'll be back in early May here, May 1. We're looking to get construction document approval and going out to bid. As we look further forward, looking to start on the July 1 timeframe, we'll absolutely start as soon as we can. We absolutely, you know, we know we have a need here with the restoration work. That'll be the first thing we tackle, so it's just a matter of, you know, getting through that bid process and getting someone on board. Any questions on schedule? So our recommendation tonight, ICS recommends approval of the design development documents as presented. Any questions?
Yes. Councillor asked you if you have any other questions? If we have no other questions, Nick will entertain development document presentation and approval. I would need a motion.
So moved.
So moved by councillor Bayless.
Support.
Support by councillor Whitney. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, B. Mr. Rowley?
Yep. Moving on to item B. Looking for your approval on the professional services agreement with JLG Architects for the feasibility study on a all-day purpose community center. We sent out RFPs for this process. We received 11 responses to the RFP. Excellent response rate, and we narrowed it down and selected three for interviews and moved on, and based off of our selection criteria outlined in the RFP. And it was a unanimous decision to move forward with JLG to move forward with this project. So looking for your approval in the amount of $78,400, and this is a budget item in the Recreation Capital Budget for this year.
Hearing what Mr. Rowley had to say, wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by councillor Bayless.
Support.
Support by councillor Whitney. Any discussion, Nick? Just to, this is basically just a feasibility study.
Correct.
So it's going to give us the information and documentation we need to then look forward on what direction we might want to move. But it's just, this contract ends when the feasibility study is completed.
Correct.
All right, very good. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Mr. Presensky?
Mr. Mayor, city council, thank you. I actually have a couple of additional items from my office that I want to just cover real quick. So the first thing is the Range Regional Animal Shelter. I know there's been a lot of talk on some of the social media platforms about what's going on, what's the city's role, et cetera. So I just want to like, kind of make sure that we all kind of understand what our role is. And when I say all of us, I mean the whole community. So remember, we own the building. We lease the real estate from the airport. There's a board of directors. They're organized under the 501(c)(3) IRS rules. We pay a monthly fee to that board for a service, which is taking care of our animals that need to be sheltered. Then there's another little piece where if there's some veterinarian expenses, we also pay those directly. And then it's really up to the board to execute those animal shelter services for the rest of the community. I did a really quick report. Sheena actually did the report for us, I think. So our actual financial stake in the animal shelter for 2023 is right around $76,000. So there is a financial stake that we have. Those are tax dollars that are paid out to another entity, so we do have a responsibility to protect those dollars. But also, because it is a board and a 501(c)(3), they do make those decisions on staffing and kind of how the place operates, and who is a paid employee and who's a volunteer, et cetera, et cetera. So hopefully, that's a high-level report on how it all works. I would open it up for questions to the city council if you have any, if you want me to address anything else specifically.
Else, does anybody have any? That's pretty much the scenario I've given to most people that have reached out, so they understand how that operation works. I appreciate you doing that in a public setting like this.
Sure. Next item from my office is our local sales tax. We're trying to get all of the information packaged up and shined up for our community, so everybody can understand what we're doing and how it works, and fiscal impact and all that good stuff. So tomorrow afternoon, we have our final meeting with our consultant on that. I will get out to the city council right after that meeting. The first fact sheet, and this will be a living document, so it'll change over time as our community has questions. as our community has questions and we answer those questions. This is how we'll capture it in these fact sheets. So we'll send it out to the city council for kind of that final, here's what it's going to look like. We'll roll it out as early as Friday afternoon or, or on Monday morning is the plan. So look for that. And some of that information was for our residents, so they can look for that on our website. Next item on my agenda is actually 4A. And this is really more of an update to the city council. And it's actually coming out of engineering. So we did receive our crack ceiling program bids. Remember, we, we collaborate with the county on that. We have, let's see, the city has 3.14 miles of city streets and 6.63 miles of state aid streets included in the project for 2024. I believe the bids came in slightly under our projected. I think we put $50,000 into our budget, and I think we're like right around 49.5, something like that. So that'll be cranking up. Again, that was from engineering, so we'll get that going. And then item 4B from my office, awarding the city construction manager at-risk services for the public safety building to Adolfson &amp; Peterson. Steve, if you can pass these down to the city council. And Nick kind of stole my thunder on how we, how we go through the process and, and get to awarding these, these RFPs and RFQs. So remember, about a month ago, we sent out an RFQ with an RFP attached to it. We had five different consultants that, that responded to that. We have an internal technical assistant team, assistance team that goes through all of those responses. We set up interviews. In this case, we actually interviewed all four of the responding companies. So we go through a pretty robust process when it comes to just on the front side. And then in the middle, when we get the companies in, in the, in the building and we start to do the interviews, it's a pre-designed list of questions. A lot of it comes out of the RFP, RFQ documents. So we have a conversation, we cover some of those different questions. And then as a group, after each company leaves, we do like a little bit of a huddle, debrief, go on to the next one. And then at the end of all five of those meetings, we spend some time going through, doing the assessments, putting that down on paper. And then we come back the next day and make a final recommendation and pathway forward for our city council. So with that, I had mentioned that we are presenting to the city council our recommendation to put Adolfson &amp; Peterson into that role as our construction manager at risk. I've asked Patrick Sims from Adolfson &amp; Peterson to be here. Maybe you have some questions for him. But I would look for feedback and city council action on that, if you will.
Counselors, if you have any questions, take a couple minutes to review the information put before you.
I would add one thing. The information that I passed out here to the city council, I was asked to be specific on how we were rating and kind of the final result. That is the, or the documents that we use.
So Greg, when you, with these documents, how many people are involved? And you just take like an overall average of scored? Or you, or how do you, that work out?
Yep, there's four people that are involved. For the interviews, it's a panel discussion. Each company brought five individuals from, you know, the executive, kind of in charge, superintendent, et cetera. And then, yeah, we, what we tried to do is do some rating. And then at the end, we get together and we just kind of assign. And that's kind of the, I think it's the first page on the, on the document that I sent out to you.
This is first page, that's, that's after everybody got together, beat upon.
Yep, that's the final result.
So we don't do an overall average of everybody involved? It's just figure out what you think that we're going to figure out at that point?
Look, these were conducted the last two weeks, right? Pretty much the construction meet are your interviews.
I believe it was early last week.
Okay.
We conducted them, all five, in one day. It was like Tuesday, I think, Tuesday or Wednesday. Take that back, it was the 11th, 11th of March it was.
Mr. Mayor, with the information in front of me and listening to the process that City Administrator Prasinski had presented, I'm comfortable making a motion to say yes to Adolf Peterson for, to award this contract.
Okay, we do have a motion on the floor from Counselor Hoffman-Sockman. Port.
I'll support it.
We have support by Counselor Bayless. At this time, any other discussions or questions? For Mr. Prasinski. Mr. Mayor? Yes?
I think you said before, like, the, the, the companies that aren't awarded the at-risk or the manager-at-risk position will still have opportunities to be involved in this project.
They will, in fact, yes. And actually, we, we talked with all five of the different companies about that very thing. And that's exactly their plan is to use as much local labor and companies as they can for procurement and, and labor.
Very good. Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion on the floor, and we have a second. No other discussion, all. All for motion, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you. We will now move on to bids and quotes, and that is again Mr. Rowley.
Mayor and council, before you tonight, I have one purchase here. Looking to purchase a new softball scoreboard for Bennett Park Field, number one. The current one there is, is not working. We had the Daktronics guy up here last week, and it's not recoverable. They do not support that, that board anymore. So in talking with the school district, they're more than willing to go 50/50 on this with us as it's their home field for softball. And if we order tomorrow, we can get it in hopefully a couple of weeks. Our crew will do install, and the school district will provide electrical. And yeah, we'll move forward there. We should be ready for the season though.
Thank you for that good partnership in that setup. So we're looking for approval for purchase of 50% of a new scoreboard for BP1. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor Swiberger. Support by Counselor Bayless. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, Nick.
Mr. Prasinski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. One additional item today. Approve the purchase of a Cub Cadet zero-turn riding lawnmower for the waste collection department from L&amp;M Supply in the amount of $4,749.50, and that is a budgeted item.
Okay, this is out on Townline Road, we're out there. Hearing what Mr. Prasinski had to say regarding the purchase for the waste collection department. Wishes of the council?
So moved.
So moved by Counselor Hildebrand.
Support.
Support by Counselor Hoffman-Sockman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Greg.
Mr. Mayor, I may.
Mayor and council, this is invoice for the removal of household waste, hazardous waste from two-story house with a basement and two-story garage apartment. All levels of the building were completely full, boarding, garbage, pigeons, animal feces. These, these buildings had a court order for removal, and the cost was for removal and disposal to a landfill. We also have to do an MPCA report on the material being removed and where it will be disposed of. I'm looking for approval for this invoice.
Very good.
And that was to a bait tech who's licensed in hazard, hazardous waste.
Very good. So we're looking for approval for payment to a bait tech. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor Whitney.
Support.
Support by Counselor Hildebrand. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Nothing on boards and commissions, we'll move on to license and permits. Want to approve the 2024 transit merchant license for David Cappinelli, Cappy's Kettle Corn. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor Swiberger.
Support.
Support by Counselor Hoffman-Sockman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. To approve the raffle permit application because of Cherry School Parent-Teacher-Student Organization. Behold Bingo at the Do U May 1st, 8/15, 22nd of 2024. Wishes of the council?
So moved.
So moved by Counselor Whitney.
Hildebrand.
Counselor Hildebrand. Support by Counselor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Three, approve the on-sale and Sunday liquor license of LBR Assets, EBA, the Iron House, at 112 East Howard Street. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor Hoffman-Sockman.
Port.
Support by Counselor Whitney. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Number four, approve the special event permit application of the city Hibbing to hold the city of Hibbing second annual cleanup on Friday, June 7th and Saturday, June 8th, 2024 at the Stunts Garage, 1100 East 25th Street. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor Whitney, supported by Counselor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Five, offer resolution number 240307 and support for the Kiwan and American Legion post to conduct charitable gambling at the Iron House, 112 East Howard Street. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor Hoffman-Sockman.
Port.
Support by Counselor Swiberger. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Finally, number six, approve 3.2 beer license and Sunday license of CAPL Retail LLC ADA ABA Joe's Quick Mart's 317 First Avenue. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor Swiberger.
Support.
Support by Counselor Hildebrand. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Could I have motion for adjournment?
So moved.
So moved by Counselor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Counselor Whitney. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you.